Welcome to the special December 12 meeting of the City of Glendale Historic Preservation Commission. This is the last meeting of 2011 and the agenda for this meeting was posted on or before December 6 on the bulletin board outside City Hall as well as on the Internet. May I have roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Present. Here. On to Agenda Item 3.
Hang on.
Okay. We did the roll call. Agenda Item 3, approval of the minutes from the October 24 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I have one correction on the bottom of Page 1, 6A.
Yes.
The note that should be deleted because it was in the wrong section.
Yes.
We'll move that to 7A.
It's already 7A.
Yeah. Is it, I thought just leaving the dais.
7A, the note is...
Oh, I see. There it is.
Okay, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes in a second?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
You want me to call the roll call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Shea?
Yes.
Commissioner Vartanya?
Yes.
Chairperson Vidor?
Yes. Oral communications. I don't have any cards for oral communications, so one more time if anyone has anything. Okay, we have one speaker for oral communications and it is Sean Bressel of the Glendale Historical Society.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to, excuse me, remind everyone that this coming Saturday at the Doctor's House Museum, we're doing our candlelight tours from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. This is the Glendale Historical Society. We always do this every December for two Saturdays. It's a lovely event. We had it this past weekend, had a large number of visitors despite the little bit of chill in the air. And it's all, the house is all decorated with, as a Victorian Christmas, and it's just beautiful. And if that's not enough to get you there, we have cookies and hot chocolate and cider. I was on cookie duty this weekend and I sampled all the cookies and I can tell you they're all delicious and you definitely have to try Elaine Wilkerson's pumpkin cookies. So I hope to see everybody there this coming Saturday, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Doctor's House Museum in Brand Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments from commissioners? Do any of the commissioners have any comments?
I have one. I wanted just to make all the commissioners and as well those of you listening aware of an event. It's at the Greystone Estate in Beverly Hills. This property's on the National Register and they're doing a house tour, December 2nd to 22nd. So you have, what, about a week and a half or two weeks left of the tour. And this was a home for Edward Dohini and it was actually a home his son built in 1928. It's 46,000 square feet on about 18 acres, so probably be a phenomenal place to see if you're interested.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I just have one. Yesterday, Sunday, the Brand Library Associates at Brand Library and the Glendale Historical Society sponsored a really great art sale, book sale, and music sale at the Brand Library to celebrate the upcoming renovation of the library. A lot of things were purchased, a lot of people were there. It was pretty exciting, fun, and chaotic, in a good way. And we decided to extend the sale to Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. So Tuesday during library open hours, the sale will continue to stay open from noon to 8:00 and on Wednesday, the 14th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. So I invite the public to come down and shop around and look at all the goodies. Thank you. Next item, I think we don't have any old business at this meeting, so the next item, new business, 7A is the...
Before that, we'll talk about Robert Berman for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Glendale lost since our last meeting one of our most interesting kind of local characters, the architect Robert Berman, who I had the pleasure to meet a few times. He actually served on our planning commission in recent years. Years before that, he'd also been a building commissioner. So he's very active in Glendale, not just at the city level, but also in architectural and musical circles and was a member of lots of clubs, founded different clubs. He was, there's a write-up on him in Glendale Area History, the book that we use for reference a lot. And it has one interesting thing because I didn't get to know him very well at all, but met him a few times and he had a real mischievous sense of humor. So at the time they wrote this book, he was talking about his membership in what he called a non-organization called the Calcutta Saddle and Cycle Club, in which membership is possible only if at least one member blackballs the applicant. So he had a funny sense of humor, but he was also a really talented architect. And I just was able to pull up a few images of some of his work. This is his most prominent building in Glendale, the Vallejo Drive Seventh Day Adventist Church over near the 2, which if anyone's had the chance to get inside the building, it really comes alive once you're inside and has this fantastic folded plate roof that you see best in the right-hand picture and the lantern up at the top with the lights hanging down from it at the lower photo. But a really interesting complex of school and church-related buildings. Probably the first work that I ever knew of his, and this is probably his most prominent work in Los Angeles, is the Adventist Church in Hollywood. This is the one that's right next to the Hollywood Freeway at Sunset, so it's really hard to miss. And definitely has some interesting modernist influences of Crouy-Bouzier and, you know, does a very interesting project on a very difficult site. The upper building is a building he did for the Adventists in Washington. He was from Washington State originally before he came to Glendale. And this was a headquarters building for an Adventist group in Washington. And then the image at the bottom right is of the Armenian church, also near the freeway in the Koenga Pass. So he has these very prominent church buildings that you see from freeways. That seems to be a very consistent feature of some of his work. He did over 70 church buildings ultimately, and he's probably best known for his ecclesiastical work. And when the Modern Committee came to, the Los Angeles Conservancy's Modern Committee came to Glendale and we met at the church on Vallejo Drive, and everyone was thrilled to, you know, be able to get in the church and have access to it. But Mr. Berman and his wife also came, so everyone was just totally excited. And I think he was very happy that everyone was coming to celebrate his work as a modernist. And his wife made us all root beer floats. It was a really enjoyable evening there. So I guess at the end of the meeting, we'll just adjourn in his memory as a talented Glendale architect and kind of a local character, so.
You'd be honored and happy to do that. Thank you very much. On to new business. The first item, 7A, is the Alex Theater, Phase 1 and Phase 2 Design Review for an addition to the south facade. And we have...
Elena Bobolian will introduce the project and then introduce the project architect.
Thank you.
Hi, Elena Bobolian with the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. As you all know, the Redevelopment Agency owns the Alex Theater and we have a management agreement and a lease with Glendale Arts to operate the theater on our behalf. As the landlord of the theater, we have some capital improvement upgrades that we make to the theater on an ongoing basis. We were before you a couple of years ago for the restoration to the facade, which just recently got completed, and now we're here before you for the expansion project, which is another one of our capital improvement projects. This capital improvement project is, its goals are to solve some of the operational deficiencies that the Alex Theater has had since its rehab in the 1990s. And some of the components that will be added to this expansion project include additional backstage, office, and meeting space, dressing rooms, and shop space. We're going to add an elevator to provide access to the second floor, as it currently does not exist. We're going to create a VIP reception area and some multipurpose office space. This project is going to be, it's proposed in two phases and you'll be looking at both phases. Before I go into a more detailed project, I'll let the architect handle that. Barry McCombe, the executive director of Glendale Arts, and Jack Alloway, the manager, are here as well as myself after Monisha's done the project to answer any questions you may have. But at this time, I will introduce Monisha Adnani of PMSM Architects to walk you through the project. And if any of you have any questions after she's done, we can come up and answer them. But just wanted to briefly introduce the project and tell you that the Redevelopment Agency is involved in funding it and our goal is to put the Alex Theater in the best shape before the Redevelopment Agency goes away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present this project. My name is Monisha Adnani, representing PMSM Architects, and we've had the fortune of working on this proposed addition. I'll just walk you briefly through the two phases that we are proposing at this point. This is the view from the southeast. That's from the Maryland Street. The building shown in purple is actually just a representation of the Lambeau Project that's being proposed on the south side of the addition. This is the existing stagehouse right here. This is where the original additions, some part of the original addition that was done in 1990 was, and we are proposing further adding a freight elevator on that side of the building. And I'll go into the plans and explain it in detail. But this basically shows the difference between the Phase 1 and the future phase for the building. The Phase 1 has just a loading area and the addition of the freight elevator. And the future phase, actually, we're going to add two-story building right where the, behind the loading area. This is the existing site plan for the project. This is the existing footprint of the theater. This is where the proposed addition is being proposed currently. This is Maryland Street leading to Wilson Street down here. And this is the loft, Lemley Cinema Loft Project that's being proposed on this side of the site. Just some more existing photographs. This is Maryland Street looking at the existing loading dock door. There's an existing south staircase that's currently exposed. Same thing right here. And this is looking right straight through the parking lot that's across the street. This is through the alley that's from the Wilson Street. So that's the alley that leads to the Wilson Street and you can see some part of the auditorium. And there's a side exit from the auditorium leading to this alley to the Wilson Street. This is just, these are just small plans shown to identify, again, the phasing that we are proposing at this point. We will be adding approximately 5,000 square feet on the south side of the building in the basement. There's also an intermediate level, that's the stage level, where we will be adding approximately 1,000 square foot of storage area. The upper level is...
Sure. Okay.
On the first...
Can you begin the mic, please?
Sure. On the first floor level, we are proposing adding a freight elevator, a passenger elevator, enclosing the existing staircase. And the upper level plans pretty much show enclosing that existing south staircase, which you saw was exposed on the existing photographs. And same is for the third level, that's the exit from the upper balcony. There are enlarged plans that I'll go through. This is the future phase. Phase 1 was this addition right here and future phase is where we are adding a office floor on the second level and we're adding a conference room, meeting room, coat check area, elevator and staircase on the lower level. Just to show some minor demolition that will be happening as part of this project. This is the staircase that leads to the basement right now that's on the south side of the building. It's not really visible from the street because it's all underground at this point. We'll just be demolishing that staircase, making a bigger opening in the stage wall to accommodate the new freight elevator, and then doing some minor changes in the basement to the dressing rooms to accommodate new dressing rooms. On the upper level, all we are doing is demolishing some of the existing railing that is surrounding the south stair right now because we're building new walls in place of those existing railings. This is the proposed addition for the basement, that's part of Phase 1. Right here is all the part of the existing auditorium. It's a plenum underneath the auditorium floor, so it's not an occupied space. Currently, the occupied space pretty much ends right here. And they have dressing rooms, there's a small laundry room, sump room. We are attaching a new freight elevator behind the existing stage wall. That's the new freight elevator. The passenger elevator sits right next to it. There is dressing rooms being added, so the ones that are shaded in yellow are all the proposed dressing rooms. There are additional restroom facilities to support the added dressing room space. And then we are proposing to add shops and storage spaces that are required for the functional use of the auditorium. This is the intermediate level. As, I don't know if you're familiar with the stage of the auditorium. The stage is currently about 10 feet lower than the, it's approximately nine to 10 feet lower than the street level. So that gives us an opportunity to actually add an intermediate level where we can create a storage level, storage room that's flush with the stage. So we're not really adding any more height. It's within the existing basement that we're creating two stories. It becomes a little bit more clear with the sections. This is the proposed addition for Phase 1 on first floor level. The freight elevator that's being added right where the loading dock door was currently, there's a passenger elevator enclosing the existing south stair, creating a hallway exit leading to the outside and the loading area. Right now, we are proposing a one-way street lane between the Cinema Loft Project and the auditorium for access to the parking area that's behind the restaurant as well as for the access to the Wilson Street. It's a one-way street for, strictly for access, you see, utility access and things like that. This is the second floor level, so this is where you exit out of the existing lower-level balcony. And all we are doing at this level is basically enclosing the existing south stair and creating a storage room at the upper level. This is the exit from the upper balcony and we, all we are doing is enclosing the south stair. We are rebuilding a new equipment screen and that will be visible in the elevations, but we are pretty much enclosing the existing mechanical platform that's there. So none of the mechanical equipment is going to be visible from the street. This is the proposed roof plan, so you can see some of the mechanical equipment is on top of that south stair. And the wall is being increased such that you won't be able to see that equipment from anywhere. This is where the existing chiller is located. We will be replacing this chiller with a new equipment of the same footprint and same size. This is the section through that intermediate level, the storage room level. This is the existing stage right here and the street level is above this basement level. So that's how we are creating an intermediate storage level above the basement. This is just a section through the basement showing the maintenance shop, stage lighting shop, and all the dressing rooms and the two storage levels. This is what the building looked like in 1992. Then there was a renovation that was done in 1990s after the, I think, 1994. And this is what the existing south elevation looks like right now. There's that mechanical equipment screen that I was mentioning earlier. So what we are proposing now is basically leaving this stucco material that's currently right here and then proposing the same sort of finish for the new addition. We're just making it much more clean because now we don't see that exposed staircase anymore. There's one surface, there's no two mechanical equipment screens, it's just going to be one wall that encloses the mechanical equipment as well. And that's the freight elevator door right there. This is the elevation from Maryland Street. That's what the current building looks like. And we're just proposing taking out this mechanical equipment, extending this facade of the building all the way out to the, about 10 feet from this face, which is this face right here. And then you see the loading dock wall in the back. This is a 3D view, so that's the loading dock area and the truck parking area. This is just a wall that's required by code to separate these exits from the loading area. That's the proposed addition of the freight elevator and the mechanical equipment screen at the top. This is the, pretty much, this is where we are enclosing that existing south stair at the upper level. And this is the hallway in the storage room that we are proposing next to the existing south stair. And that's the freight elevator in the back. This is the view from the parking behind the restaurants. Going to the future phase, this is where we are proposing adding additional square footage. Overall, we are proposing additional 5,000 square feet divided between first floor and second floor. The side exit, we will still maintain the side exit, we'll just create a small intermediate lobby. There's a passenger elevator, a staircase servicing the two floors. There's an office, storage room, conference and meeting room, and then it connects to the Phase 1 that's shown in the light gray hatch right there. By having this passenger elevator, we'll actually be able to make the upper balcony of the existing auditorium accessible. This is the second floor level. The passenger elevator is right here. This is the access to the upper balcony, to the mezzanine lobby of the auditorium. Restrooms to support the offices, open workstations and closed office spaces, staff break room and a file storage area. And this is where, again, it connects to the, to the Phase 1, which is shown in light gray right here. This is a roof plan for the proposed addition. Section through the proposed addition, so the gray hatched area is what's being added as Phase 1 and the area that's hatched in yellow is what's being proposed for future This is the elevation of the future phase. We were really trying to, when we designed, when I designed this particular addition, my goal was to try to make it as contemporary as possible so that it also gels with the Lemley Project that's being proposed on the side of the building. Because you really can't see any of the historic features that are at the front of the building on this side of the property. But at the same time, I was trying to use some of the textures that were on the existing building and implementing that in the new addition. So that's the reason the proposed metal panels actually have a horizontal banding because that kind of complements the concrete board form finish that's on the existing building right now. The lower-level first floor area is also being proposed as a concrete board form finish so that it, again, complements what was there on the existing building. All the plaster area is all being proposed as part of the Phase 1. And this right here is the side exit that leads to the street leading to the Wilson This is the elevation from Maryland Street, so that's the Lemley Loft Project. The color of Lemley Loft Project is not purple. That's just an indication that I'm showing. It's silver metal panels that's facing the street. So, again, using the metal panel on the upper level, trying to complement what's being proposed on the Lemley Project. That's the 3D view. That's all Phase 1. And this metal panel and the concrete board form lower level is the future phase. This is the view from the restaurants. This is the side exit leading to the Wilson Avenue. Again, another view just enlarging, looking towards Maryland Street. Should be it. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions now?
Could you review the window material and style?
Sure. The window material that I'm proposing is pretty simple because, as there are no windows on this side of the building and the windows that are being proposed on the Lemley Project are pretty simple as well, right now I'm proposing just fixed metal panel, metal windows, metal frames with fixed glazing. Because of the proximity of the building to the Lemley Project, these windows have to be fire-rated. So that is one more reason from cost-effective point of view, the simpler they are, the easier they are to be built as a fire-rated window.
It won't be wired glass?
No, it won't be wired glass, yeah. That's, that's one of the reasons why I cannot make the openings bigger than what I'm showing right here because then I cross the limit of having a non-wired glass.
Are the windows flush with the outer cladding or are they recessed in?
They will be recessed, yeah. Right now, this exterior cladding that's being proposed actually sticks out a foot below the lower concrete board form finish.
Yes.
And then the windows will be recessed within that exterior, one-foot thickness on the upper level.
And is the, is the Lemley Project Design, Design Review Board approved and entitled yet or is it just...
It was approved by the agency, actually.
Okay, okay. So that, when we say that we're working with another design, we know that that is the design, okay.
I'm hoping that's not going to change.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions right now? We'll have a discussion, but if you have any questions for the architect.
I just have a quick question on the anodized bronze metal panels. I'm not real familiar with that material. I find it very interesting. I was just curious how that ages and patina's over time.
It actually, it's been treated, so it won't patina over time. It'll look like this for a long time. And then you have to recode it after a certain period of time. But it's 10 to 20 years down the road.
Okay, so it has some maintenance.
Yeah, so the, I mean, this, it's really hard to get the colors to look right in the computer when you're rendering, but this is what the material is actually going to look like.
Okay.
It's going to be a dark shade. It's more like a terracotta shade with contrasting colors throughout.
And is it more matte or is it more...
It's matte. It's matte, yeah. It's definitely more matte. It's exactly like, it doesn't have any shine, it's really matte, yeah.
Okay. If there aren't any further questions, we do have one speaker. We have Sean Bressel from the Glendale Historical Society.
Thank you.
So we may have you back when we get into discussion, but thank you for now.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission. I'm Sean Bressel with the Glendale Historical Society. And the Glendale Historical Society supports the staff recommendation on the Alex Theater that you just saw the presentation on. We think it maintains the character of the building and is important because it makes the building more functional and hopefully can improve the economics of the Alex, which is very important for maintaining the historic integrity of that structure in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. So now I think we go into discussion and comments, so is there anyone who'd like to start?
Well, I'll go ahead. I was there yesterday looking over the plans and I was at the Alex and they had the Nutcracker Suite, which was performed yesterday afternoon and in the evening. All of the people that were in the performance were outside along the side of the Alex and I was thinking it would be really nice had this already been done. They just, were just milling around in the alleyway. And if the second phase had already been finished, they would have someplace to go rather than just wandering around the building itself. So I, I think in the long run, this will be an asset to the Alex and all the performers that work there, besides the fact that it brings it into the 21st century.
Thank you.
I would agree that I think this expansion is needed and important for the theater. I agree with staff's recommendation that the expansion meets the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation specifically. No character-defining features of the historic theater will be damaged or destroyed. And if the addition were to be taken down at some point in the future, there would be nominal work needed to bring it back to original. So I, I like the plans. We already do have a pretty monolithic wall on that side of the building, just a big broad wall. I think the plant, this plan complements that and I think it's really a functional expansion, so I think it makes sense. And I think those are my comments.
Thank you.
I agree with, with my colleagues here. Supporting this proposal, I think it'll definitely improve the use and functionality of the Alex Theater. And aesthetically, I think it complements what's there and doesn't take away from the historic features. I have a couple of plan comments, if I may, for the architect. And again... And again, these are details, just maybe take a few notes and look at them later. On page four, my concern would be in hallway, I think it's B-26, just the clearance for the door coming out of the hallway, B-24, making sure you've got code clearances there. It looks tight with the door swing out into that area. On page 11, in the stage storage, B-11, it looks like maybe the doors were located in the wrong area in that section.
They have been swapped out.
Okay. And at the end of that section, I know you're referring to sometimes Phase One names and sometimes Phase Two, but stair one, B-03, is really storage B, I think, O-3. And then I was just curious, it's hard to tell, maybe just because the drawings are so small, not a major issue at all, but I believe there's a slope from the freight elevator to that exterior stair, and it's just hard to see here, maybe it is in the drawing, I just couldn't...
There is.
Couldn't pick it up? Okay.
There is a, almost zero point, actually.
Amicia?
Sorry. Okay, so, right here, the street, the street actually slopes down about .25 feet as you go down to Wilson Avenue. And from here, going down to the loading dock, we are sloping down about a foot.
Okay, but not on the upper walkway where the pedestrian is shown in the picture right by the freight elevator?
That one also actually slopes, because right here, the loading dock is about 42 inches, and then as we go up, it actually slopes up.
Yeah, I could read on the plans, it wasn't clear on any of the perspectives, so I was just making sure.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very...
Looked like six inches, maybe.
Yeah, it's like a 2% slope, so it's not very visible on this view, but there is a slope up there on that loading dock.
That's it, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. I agree with and appreciate my colleagues' comments, and just adding that I think this is wonderful. It's a beautiful addition because it has style, it has design features that speak to the surrounding buildings. And it's obviously something that's very much needed to keep the Alex sustained and viable into the future, which we're all very, very concerned about and want to make sure we do everything we can to support. So I'm very supportive of it as well. I have, I just realized I have a question or maybe need a clarification. I'm not exactly sure what the, next to the loading dock, just to the left of it, adjacent to the Lemley project, there is an accessway that goes, a one-way street that is for vehicular traffic that goes all the way through. That's not meant to be pedestrian access, or, it could be pedestrian access.
It's a combination of both. So right here, we have a five-foot walkway.
Okay, there is a walkway.
To the cinema loft. And then there is a one-way driveline that's about 11 feet wide.
Okay. I just wanted to understand what that was, and that there was pedestrian access way in there.
There is pedestrian access, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other comments, I don't think. Right, is there a time hori, I realize that there's fundraising involved, but is there a time horizon for Phase One and Phase Two? A goal, a wish?
Good afternoon, I'm Barry McCombe, I'm the Executive Director of Glendale Arts. Phase One, we're actually hoping to break ground on this summer in tandem with the Lemley project, so that we're both doing the subterranean work at the same time, which will save both projects some costs. We're moving forward in hopes that we can actually do Phase One and Phase Two together, if we can get the additional funding for Phase Two. We've actually formed a committee of many local residents to help us on that cause, and we're looking at a wide variety of different funding options. So it really just kind of depends on the economy.
Thank you.
If, if we don't do the two phases together, I would hope within a year's time that we're ready to start Phase Two.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, I think we can wrap up, so...
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Phase One and Phase Two of the Alex Expansion Project as presented.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioners Morgan?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Bartanian?
Yes.
Chairperson Vidor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will go on to Agenda Item 7B, the Verdugo Adobe, proposed alterations to the existing garage and demolition of the garden wall. Thank you.
Actually, I need this first. Could you give me?
I don't know.
There we go.
I'd like to start my presentation with a general overview for the public on the site. The site is located north of Verdugo Park and west of Quinado Boulevard. It is about 1.33 acre, and it's a gated park nestled between residential, single-family The site contains two historic components, significant components that are on the California Register. The first component is a small adobe house that is considered the oldest structure in And the second component is the location for the Oak of Peace, where, under the Oak of Peace, the terms of a Mexican surrender of California Territory was discussed on January 11, 1847. Unfortunately, the Oak of Peace no longer exists, and there is a marker there signifying its location. The city bought the site in 1989 and, and converted the adobe into a museum in conjunction with the Days of the Verdugo's Heritage Association. But before the city bought the site, Dr. Ernest Basher owned the site, and his family owned the site. He bought it in 1945, and on the site, he made several improvements. One of the improvements is a garage building, about 20 feet by 30 feet, and he built the garage building in 1946. The Basher family also built a trellis structure and placed a fountain and did some paving on a patio area, but the timing may be in the 70s. On the side, there is also an existing driveway, which was actually a roadway, it was a public road that was vacated by the Bashers in 46, 1946. There is also a general picnic area that's used by the public. Here is what the adobe museum looks like on the site. The site is a neighborhood park. It's also used for groups that come to visit the adobe museum, for school children programs, the educational programs, adults, seniors. It's also used by the city as a revenue generating opportunity, so it's rented for possibly wedding ceremonies, birthday parties, photo ops. So it's used for different functions. And in the past, not just, for a long time, having restroom facility has been a problem on the site. There is a makeshift, a small room in the back of the adobe that has been used as a restroom, and it has been working on and off, not functioning properly. So the city decided to build a restroom facility on the site. We evaluated the site, and we found that the most appropriate way to approach this is to convert, is the adaptive reuse of the existing garage building on the site. And as I stated, the garage is about 20 feet wide by 30 feet deep, so the size was appropriate. So what we've done is we designed the front of that garage, we will take out the garage door, and we'll build some minor walls, and we will have two unisex restrooms. We're not going to do a man and a woman, we'll have them unisex, so they're more used. And in the back of the restrooms, we'll have a preparation room that could be used in conjunction with renting the site out. If somebody wants to serve food, they'll, can be, can use the preparation room. We'll have also a storage room for our staff and a suitable gardener's room. We plan to do the renovation in, compatible with the adobe site, so we will be using wood on the front doors, we'll be using china fixtures, we're going to try to use a base for the sink, going back to the drawing on the left. We'll try to use a wood base with tile top and wood framed mirror and something compatible with the adobe. And we're going to place a very translucent trellis in the front of the building just to soften the impact, so when you're standing there, the restroom doors are not in your face, giving some layering. On the exterior of the building, the exterior of the building is made of brick block, and it's in, actually in a bad shape, quite deteriorated, so we will be plastering the exterior of the building. In terms of the overall structure of the building, I met with Jen Edwards, who our senior code specialist, and would review the structure. The structure is, is in a good shape, so we will not need to reinforce it. The other thing is the roof on top of the building, the roof on the garage matches the roof at the adobe. So we will keep this roof, it's actually metal roof, and I think it's been placed, changed in maybe early 80s. So we will be repairing this roof and repair the roof at the adobe as well. We will be utilizing the same opening on the side of the garage for the entrance to the storage room and the prep room. Other improvements we will be doing at the site is we would like to demolish the trellis structure and the masonry wall and open that area into a large gathering area. And when you evaluate the trellis structure, you'll see that it blocks the adobe, it, almost the whole site, and somewhat crowds it because it's placed very close to it. So we will be looking at demolishing the trellis structure and removing the tile paving from the patio area, the tile have lifted and, and creates a trip hazard condition. So this is a plan showing how we will remove the trellis and expand that whole patio area to the driveway. And we will do some minor landscaping around the area, and that basically concludes our proposal.
Great, thank you very much, Lila. Does anyone have any questions for Spatar before we turn it over to the oral, to the public?
I have a few questions. What is the flooring finish from the wood trellis back to the doors to the restrooms?
From the wood, oh!
So you're, it's exterior, but it kind of leads into that vestibule there, what is the, the finish, the surface?
Possibly, at this time, I'm looking at concrete finish, maybe stained concrete, and possibly could be tile. So we haven't decided the finish in there. If there is a preference, please indicate.
Okay. And then are those windows, operable windows maybe, on either side of the restroom entrances, or what is that indicating on the plan?
Yes, they're operable windows. Actually, our maintenance staff made a preference to have some natural ventilation, even though we will have mechanical ventilation, so they will be operable wood windows.
And so what would those windows be in material and style?
Wood, wood and glass. Yeah, we will use wood.
And do you, you don't have an elevation of that?
The windows?
For size, yeah.
The inside? No, I don't have one.
Looks like we have wood casement windows?
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody else have a comment?
Just a minor question. On, are there any decisions on the plantings on the trellis? Is that going to be like a bougainvillea, or?
You mean a new trellis?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a kind of sensitive, because we want to maintain the security element, we don't want to create a hidden spot for predators, so we have to keep it translucent. So possibly, we're still looking at different
Okay.
...options that it's, we have to carefully select
Right.
That kind of material.
Understood. Thank you.
One quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
On the preparation room, that food will be prepared there?
It probably will be served, meaning you bring the food and maybe put it in the bowls, more serving than actual cooking or preparing of the food.
And there won't be any health issues? Because I noticed when you go from the preparation room into kind of the gardener's room, I mean, the gardener's room's a little bit
Separate.
Separate, but then there's a room that's just not listed as, so there won't be any problems as far as health issues, bringing the food from, from the preparation?
Outside.
Right, well, not so much outside, you've got the door down at the south end where the preparation room is, and then you've got, it's going into another room. So the gardener will be bringing, I presume that's where they're going to have all of their mowing and other?
Things, yeah, correct.
So there won't be any health issues as far as going through?
That's a very good point. We'll look further into that. Typically, the gardener work is what be done when there is the function, but we'll look into if that space is sensitive, because it shares between the prep room and the gardener room. But the activities are generally separate.
Okay.
They don't happen at the same time.
Okay.
I don't think I had anything other than to just reiterate, there isn't not going to be any change in the existing landscaping, other than taking down the trellis, which has nothing on it anyway.
As I stated, there will be minor, minor landscaping adjustments, yeah, to enhance the area.
Okay, within the framework of the current
Landscaping, maybe succulent
Like drought tolerant?
Yeah, drought tolerant palette, something compatible to the adobe.
And have you, you've discussed and received input from the, you know, organizations, like stakeholders such as the groups?
We met with the Days of the Verdugo's Heritage Association, we met with the Homeowners Association, Verdugo Woodlands West, Homeowners Association. I made contact with the Historical Society, with the president, but he was busy, and we hope to meet after this and discuss
Okay, that's terrific.
Get his feedback as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other questions right now, we will go to oral communications. The first person is Phyllis Shermer of the Days of the Verdugo.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Phyllis Shermer, a resident of Glendale and a member of the Days of Verdugo Heritage Association for just a short time. And I'm sorry that a lot of our other members couldn't be here today, but we are definitely in support of all the improvements you can possibly do. We are the group that maintains the interior of the adobe. And the only negative that I've heard so far is the tile that is out on the grounds. If that's going to be converted to dirt, if there's going to be weddings, are we going to run into problems, things of that nature? But if it's a very compacted ground, then perhaps it won't be an issue. But anyway, we are definitely in support of all the improvements, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Sean Bressel of the Glendale Historical Society.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission. The Glendale Historical Society supports the recommendations for the Casa Verdugo. The conversion of the garage into bathroom space and food prep and gardener's space really is, seems to be a very reasonable way to make the facility more functional and, in a way that doesn't detract from the existing historic structure of the adobe. Likewise, the elimination of the, of the trellis will open up that space and make it more, the view in much more appropriate and, and eliminate frankly, an inappropriate later addition that, that doesn't really add anything to the site. So we do support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last speaker is Myrna Stanley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Myrna Stanley, President of Verdugo Woodlands West.
I'm Myrna Stanley, President of Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. And we have board, two of our board members here as well. And we're very pleased that this venerable site is finally getting some attention. It's a meeting place, it's a place where people congregate, and it's a source of pride and it will be more so, I'm sure, after this is accomplished. I didn't catch who asked about the trellis in front of the restrooms, but we're very thankful that that's open, that it's, you need to have access to public bathrooms visible at all times. And I guess whether that'll be open all the time or not, I guess that's something for Parks and Rec, I don't think this commission addresses that. But the removal of that trellis, it really will open it up and it'll make the focus the Adobe as it should be. So we're very supportive. I just, I'd like to ask what the timeline is because we have our annual meeting in October, towards the end of October, and if we can't hold it on the grounds, we'll have to make some early adjustments to those plans. But thanks very much for all this work and there's a lot of work to be done on this site. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Would you like to answer the question on the timeline? Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking at hopefully doing the construction in summertime and we hope if everything goes well, we will be able to finish, complete the improvements by the annual meeting.
Okay. I was a little concerned about, could you just elaborate on Ms. Shermer's comment about, you know, I wasn't sure what the issue was there. Obviously, the space is going to be opened up.
The DG.
But are the regulations in terms of who can have access to and rent the facility going to be used in terms of surfacing?
Oh, the DG, the decomposed granite?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the, when we remove the tile, we will continue the decomposed granite that exists at this time throughout that patio area.
Okay.
And yes, it will be compacted and we don't feel there would be any problem with weddings or something like that.
Thank you. We can proceed, I think, close the public hearing and proceed to the discussion. So would someone like to open up with some comments?
Well, I'd just like to know about the DG. Is it ADA compatible? Is it?
ADA compatible?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes, the DG is ADA compatible, correct. We have it in several parks as a main pathway as well. So it's becoming more used, the DG.
Okay.
And it gives us natural drainage. There is a drainage problem in that area, just allow that to happen also without bringing drains and openings and grades in that area. Keeps it natural.
Thank you.
Would either of you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I think overall, the proposal seems to make sense and seems to make better use of the park. Opening that up to see the original Adobe home, I think is going to be a good thing and removing the trellis. So I support the project in general. I have a couple of design comments, and that would be on the kind of converted garage use. I'm just curious about, and I know this is a very, it looks like preliminary sketch and not really refined design drawings, but the clipped corners of now that new garage opening, which the doors to the restrooms would be beyond, you know, that doesn't really seem to tie into the existing Adobe home that's there or any real features of the style of its time or period. And so that would really be something I think maybe the designer architect on this project could look at. The trellises in front to me detract actually from the design, and I don't think it's been thought out, at least in these early sketches. You've got hardscape right up to the garage currently. I don't see any, you know, planters being cut in if there's concern about screening those and the vines growing too thick that you can't see if someone's behind those or, you know, waiting for someone. I think, I don't know that the Parks and Recreation want to be trimming something so frequently that that wouldn't happen in a few weeks' time. Some of those vines grow pretty quickly. I think you could achieve a similar look of trying to soften that exterior, maybe with some other kind of planting and planters being put in there. So I think that should be looked at. Those are my main issues.
In terms of the clipped corners, do you have any recommendations? Yeah, if you want to reopen the public hearing?
Let's reopen the public hearing.
I totally agree with the issue that you brought up. The clipped corner came as a result of the structure because of the gable roof, so we will not have the proper clearance if you keep, if we keep it to the bottom of that truss condition. That's why trying to keep the clearance high and minimize as much of that angle as possible. And when we go into the construction documents, we probably will look at if we have, but I agree with you, I am, we are not in favor of the clipped corners. They're not compatible in that case.
Perhaps a wood beam spanning the opening might be more, or something that looks like a wood beam might be more appropriate.
At the corners, possibly, you mean?
Or spanning the whole opening?
Spanning the?
Yeah, but you still have corners. We'll see about the clearance, that's the only problem.
That's why it could be.
Yeah.
Is it a height issue there?
Yeah, it's the clearance.
Clearance for what?
We'll look at minimizing.
Yeah, I don't know what that dimension is. I don't have dimensions on any of these drawings.
Yeah, it's the height situation. But it's a point well taken. We will try to, we can eliminate or minimize that. I agree total.
I mean, can't, can the whole thing be eliminated? It just looks like the ghost of a garage door.
You mean the top, the opening? Well, what happens is that the walls recess, if you look in the plan, so it's really a recess and then you have that opening.
Right. Nothing you can do about it.
If you, yeah, it's recessed in a little bit, so you have some shelter on top of the doors.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say, I agree with Commissioner Shire's suggestion to maybe look at a different solution for the, either a planter or the trellising in the front. Again, again, it's probably outside of our purview regarding, you know, the plantings and all of that. And I had asked earlier about what the planting might be, but I think if we're trying to achieve safety, maybe another solution might be a little more workable. But I, I think these changes make a lot of sense, specifically, you know, taking a non-historic structure, and I think you can never have too many restrooms anywhere, so I think that's a good idea. And I can't add much more. I think the plans are good. I think it's going to increase the functionality of the park and thank you for the well thought out presentation.
And I agree with all my colleagues. I would like to see the trellises in front of the restrooms go away. If we need, feel we need some decoration there, there certainly can be a planting or even pots, but I don't see foliage on those trellises and I therefore don't see a trellis that doesn't have foliage on it. And that's one of the reasons I'm happy about the removal of the other architectural element with the wall. I go to that park occasionally just to sit. It's such a serene, beautiful, relaxing place. And I'm glad that's going away as well. I think it will really enhance views of the Adobe. I'm also concerned about the comment that my colleague, Mr. Morgan, made about just the arrangement of the preparation space and the gardening in there, but you're going to be following up on that, so I'm sure that'll be resolved anyway. I'm in favor of the plan as it's been proposed, with the change in the trellis being removed.
One option the commission could consider, since you're not used to seeing things at this stage of preparation, where you're used to seeing more, you know, scale drawings.
Right.
We could bring this back to you after Lila works on incorporating your comments, or you could, you know, leave it for a staff decision either way. But if you see the full proposal, that would include the landscape changes, any changes to the door opening, and we could work with Stephanie Reich to kind of incorporate some of these things.
Does anyone have any specific feelings they want to express about that?
I wouldn't mind seeing it, not that I don't trust staff, but.
I concur.
Yes, we'd be, we'd love to see it again. Not that we don't appreciate what you're doing. We just, we just love that park and that Adobe so much, we want to be involved. Okay.
Thank you.
So I think we're done and I would like to entertain a motion on this. So would someone like to make one?
At this point, well.
We don't need a motion, this is review.
Yeah, we don't need a motion since you've asked us to.
Okay, we're coming back. Okay, so we can just thank you for your time and thank the public for their input. All right, let's move on now to item number eight, which is updates from the planning division and informational briefings.
Brandon, help me keep word.
Okay, we're going to have a presentation by Jay Platt, so just bear with us for a minute.
So what is this? What is that? I'm taking all my, my lunch board through here and then I'm going to bring my food through here. You can't do that.
You can't.
No, I was trying, I was hoping Lila might.
Okay.
I saw she was engrossed.
Year-end update.
Oops. Okay, as opposed to last year where we did our super fancy year-end update to the masses into the night, we'll do a quick year-end update, just to remind everyone where we've been, what we've seen, what we've put on the Glendale Register, where our historic districts are, what we've done with design review. It's been a really interesting year, I think, especially with the commission stepping in. We've had a lot of interesting city-generated projects that are bringing this commission more into the role of the design review authority that you are. And I expect as we get our new historic districts online, we'll start seeing a lot more projects coming in at the, at the single-family residential scale that we haven't seen too many of so far. So just in terms of where we've been, we designated six buildings, city council designated six buildings, putting them on the Glendale Register, including this lovely, modern-style house over in Chevy Chase area. It's Glendale Register number 88 on Edgewood Drive. I'm sure you remember all of these. One thing here with the central storage building on South Central, the library has been slowly, Glendale Public Library has slowly been putting a lot of images up on their website. So we were lucky, they put a whole new slew of things up and this great picture of the original Lyon Storage Building after they had cut it back. If you remember, this is the one they sliced off the facade and widened central. So this gives us a good idea, I think, of what this building will look like after the owners meet their MILZAC conditions, except of course for the big sign up on the roof and the big signs on the side, but certainly how it'll look with the windows being restored. And I'm not sure if you remember, but in addition to the various conditions that the commission put on the MILZAC contract, city council also asked them to change the display windows on the front of the building. And originally, we were going to kind of just work with what worked with the style, but now we have what appear to be the original condition, very simple, straightforward, plate glass windows. And even these kind of stucco bulkheads underneath the windows are pretty much probably the original configuration, so we even have the proportions down pretty well. So this was kind of fun to find this photo. Here's the house on Cordova, just outside of the Rossmoyn Historic District. This is in the Bellhurst Hill Slope neighborhood, and this is the one, if you remember, that has the fantastic kind of walkway curving, walkway spiral staircase that takes you from street level up to the house. And this, this house had a lot of really interesting features outside and in, if you remember, this little room down here with the portholes, it's pretty cool. The Stanford House on Kenneth Road is Glendale Register number 91. And here's the Wall House, the Asian-influenced modern ranch up in the, in the Verdugo Woodlands area, just near the country club. And then finally, our most recent designation, we're up to 93 now, pushing triple digits in the next year or so. The Farrar House, built by the developer of Chevy Chase Estates. And all of these, I think, met with your unanimous approval, as well as city council's unanimous approval, although central storage might have got one nay vote, if I remember correctly, on that city council. Moving on to kind of the design review, the commission spent a lot of time looking at the forecourt for the Alex, which is now on hold. This is the approved design. I think in terms of funding, they realized that the functional benefits of doing the basement addition at this time outweighed the more cosmetic benefits of working on the forecourt. But this is still the approved design and we hope that either this design or perhaps a more elaborate one, depending on their funding levels, will, will come into play in the next few years, hopefully. This was the commission's first single-family residential design review in the Royal Boulevard Historic District. A non-contributing house was taken down for this, and this was the proposal that was approved with a number of changes from the original proposal based on commission comments. We don't expect that we'll be seeing a lot of new construction in our historic districts, but over time we will, and hopefully we'll start refining, you know, what we're looking for and how we'll be able to fit new construction into these period revival neighborhoods.
Do you have any update on that one?
I haven't heard a thing, so. That's, you know, a lot of these, a lot of projects that we approve, you know, don't, don't end up happening, so. This is the project for the gates at the, at Brand Park, riffing off of the existing ironwork that filled the El Meradero gateway. This is prior to, you know, we haven't seen the final drawings, but the commission did ask for some additional decorative, simple but decorative detail on the new gates, and we won't approve the project until we see that come to us. And then, of course, the big project that, where do you go? For the Brand Library renovation, with the construction of the connector between the two buildings and the complete revamping of Brand Library. And I think everyone's really excited about this project, from the library staff to the public, to you guys, to us guys. It's, it's pretty cool and we're looking forward to that. One of our big efforts this year in the planning department or the planning division was the North Glendale Community Plan, which you have reviewed. It's a multi-part document, so there's a historic context for North Glendale that is attached to it as an appendix. There are a lot of code changes and zoning change, or ordinance changes and zoning changes that accompanied this, issues that don't relate to the Preservation Commission, for example, height limits on Fort Hill Boulevard. But this was a two and a half, three-year process, working with community groups and advisory task force made up of residents and stakeholders in North Glendale area. At the same time, since we were, we needed to prepare design guidelines for North Glendale, we were, Stephanie Reich led the effort to create comprehensive design guidelines for the entire city. So all of this entire package was just approved by city council last week, last Tuesday, actually.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So it was a real group effort on the part of residents and business owners and staff, and very exciting. And we want to call out some special thanks to Glendale Historical Society member Marcia Hanford, who volunteered to proofread, I haven't counted how many pages we have here, but it's several hundred pages, a pretty dense document, and Marcia really helped us out a lot by doing the proofreading. So we want to give her some public acknowledgement and thanks from, from all of us here. One of the things that we've started focusing on more in the last couple of years as a commission is for the commission to kind of move policy discussions forward and to present ideas that in some cases get turned into actual new commission policy, in some cases we do research and the commission decides that's an avenue that they don't, the commission doesn't want to pursue. But some of the things that we made significant strides on were the naming policy for Glendale Register properties. This is now going to be included in the commissioner handbook, so we'll ultimately giving you, be giving you updated sections and new commissioners will receive this. I know there was concern, Commissioner Vidor and I were talking about, well, I know there was concern, Commissioner Vidor and I were talking about, well, it's nice that we talk about these things, but how are we going to remember these things, and how's the next commission, and how are the people after I'm gone and everyone else is gone? So we want to kind of memorialize it by using the Commission handbook as the kind of repository for new commission policy. We're going to take a case-by-case approach to the idea of landscaping, as it may block properties from visibility from the street. The reason, as I was thinking about it more, especially with the case-by-case, is situations like the Farrar House, where you have a fence, a landscaped wall or fence right in front of the house, that's part of the original construction as best we can tell. So we wouldn't want to have any kind of policy that just forbid that sort of thing, but we want to treat it carefully, so as you are considering Milzack applications in the future, it'll be your opportunity to direct staff to include new conditions as needed in those contracts, and we'll develop some boilerplate so that it'll probably, it'll probably end up in most of the contracts and be taken out from situations where it wouldn't apply. We discussed the commissioner's ability to communicate as commissioners with members of the community, and we got a reading from the City Attorney's Office that it is okay for you to represent the commission as commissioners and to go to public presentations representing the commission, and of course, the only limitation there is making sure we don't have Brown Act violations. We talked about the potential problems we're going to have with solar panel installations in our historic neighborhoods and Glendale Register properties, and I think we're all kind of resigned to the fact that under the state law, we aren't going to have, at this point, much opportunity to do any kind of design review for solar installations. So we're hopeful that we can still work informally with applicants as this becomes more of an issue and people are more interested in adding these solar panels and whatever else comes next, but at this point, you know, we may see things that we're not happy to see in some of our neighborhoods. And then finally, we had talked about whether the commission can or should regulate interior spaces, and we did a study of other jurisdictions and found that it's relatively rare, but not unheard of, for commissions to regulate interiors. The big question being what's the public purpose in terms of who's benefiting from those interiors being restored. We came to the conclusion that, at this point, the commission won't be entertaining interior regulation. It's a subject that I'm sure we can revisit. A lot of cities have had kind of disasters, and Pasadena regulates the interiors of all green and green buildings because of the Blacker House having been stripped of all of its furnishings, so that was what motivated the city to make that decision. But at this point, we're going to say that we're still focused just on the exteriors of properties.
I was under the impression from our discussion that we had agreed that where there is some public benefit in that...
Ah, yes.
...a lobby of a building or something, a commercial or institutional building.
Yeah, what we're calling, what we're calling public, public structures, like this building or City Hall, or quasi-public structures, which would be, you know, well, the Alex Theater is technically a public structure, but something like a bank interior. The one that's come up so far was when we reviewed the Masonic Temple, the lobby area was considered quasi-public, and we're going to create language when we do an ordinance revision, that we're slowly working on ideas for the ordinance revision, and we'll definitely have definitions of what is a public space, what's a quasi-public space, and what's a private space, so that that's clear.
Okay.
And unless you have things that you remember that I haven't put up, oh, I'm sorry, the historic districts, I didn't create a slide for, but we have three historic districts moving through the process. We have Rossmoyn in the petition gathering, petition signature gathering phase, which is bringing us almost to the end of that process, so we're assuming and expecting that we'll get a lot of signatures, hopefully meeting the ordinance's requirements for 50% or more, and then we move into the final phase for Rossmoyn. North Cumberland Heights, we're just finishing, it's been a really slow process trying to do the staff-level update of the Cumberland Heights survey, we're just finishing it, and once it's done, it's, which I'm still hoping is going to be this week, but I've said that for many weeks recently, but we're going to send that up to Sacramento for what we're thinking of as a peer review, so that it's not just staff's opinion, we're getting the professional preservation opinion. We're doing that in this case because we didn't have a firm, a consulting firm do the survey, so we saved a considerable amount of money for the city by not doing that, but there's the extra step of having to go through the peer review with that. And then the Brockmont Park Historic District is still in the Historic Resource Survey development phase. I spoke with the consultant, the volunteer consultant, working on that recently, and she feels that she's approaching the point where she'll be able to turn it in so that we can review it as a first draft at least, but I'm not sure what the timeline on that will be. Everything historic district-wise?
Have there been any other discussions, informal or otherwise, on anyone else in the community entertaining the possibility of submitting application?
Over the last few years, we've heard a little here, a little there, but no follow-through. We did have a couple of people working on the area south of Art Even Highlands, so it would be an extension to the south. I haven't heard from them for quite some time. It seems to be how it works, they come in, you know...
In little groups, yes.
After these three go through, let us breathe for a little bit, and then we'll continue, so...
I had a quick question, if I may?
Yes.
Regarding a project like the entrance courtyard to the Alex Theater, I was not a part of the commission when that was reviewed, but I just had a question. When a proposal like that is approved, and as you noted, the current renovations are taking precedence over the courtyard for economic reasons, is there a sort of a statute of limitations? In other words, if that weren't done for the next five or 10 years, would that be reviewed again, or would the approved designs stand? How does...
If it were five or 10 years, I think we'd want to bring it back to the commission. I don't think there's an official statute of limitations on a design.
No, there isn't. For Design Review Board, there is, but that's regulated through the zoning code. The city's, the Glendale Register properties are regulated through Title 15, which is a different section of the municipal code than the zoning code, and there is not any statute of limitation. For Design Review, they say if you don't enact your design within, if you don't pull building permits in two years, your design review approval is dead for most Adobe properties. I guess the difference is that hopefully, things that you approve for historic properties will stand the test of time and should be good for a longer period of time.
Is that statute of limitations applicable in the case of the Rossmoyn, the Royal Boulevard infill project, or not?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah. Historic districts are also regulated through the zoning code.
Okay.
And they're not in the same section of the municipal code as the Glendale Register properties.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do you want to continue with the next item?
Sure.
Unless someone, does anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead then.
Okay. I gave everyone a list. We were hoping to have a final and complete list of city-owned properties that the commission's been looking at over the last several months, that various departments that are responsible for those properties have agreed that it's a good idea for us to move forward with nominations to the Glendale Register. So the list in front of you is close to the final list. We may still have some more discussions with a couple of departments that were less interested. For example, the Glendale Water and Power Department chose not to list any of the three properties that we looked at, and that may be their final decision, and we can't nominate something over their objection, but there may be still room for discussion. I think even as the list stands, it's pretty exciting to think that we'll be able to potentially nominate, I didn't count how many there are here, it's at least 12 Glendale, 11, thank you, 11 Glendale Register nominations. What we haven't done is make any decisions about who's going to be writing the nominations. We're hoping this is a really interactive process with city staff, people from departments, people from the Historical Society and the community who may be interested in volunteering. So once we get the list finalized sometime, you know, early next year, we'll start reaching out to what we would think would be likely candidates and letting people know that we're interested in hearing from volunteers and get some really nice nominations written and then move things through the process. We'll also be letting City Council and the city manager, our new city manager, know that we're doing this so that everyone knows it's coming, no surprises. But if you read the list, the El Merodero Gateway at Brand Park, the one we just looked at with the railings, the Brand Family Cemetery behind, up in the canyon behind the mansion would be a candidate, the building we're sitting in, which we actually have extensive research on from when they went through the seismic upgrade, so that's the easiest nomination to write. Four of the city's libraries, Central Library, the Montrose Crescenta, Grand View Branch, and also the Casa Verdugo Branch, which are all really interesting examples of modernist architecture, library design, each one quite unique. The Spar Heights Community Center, which is kind of a very obvious candidate, it has a fairly significant addition on it that we'll have to consider as part of the nomination, but at this point, I wouldn't say that that would preclude its eligibility. The walls, the, really interesting, and hopefully you guys will get up and look at the walls in Dunmore Park if you haven't seen them, because they're really, really cool, but those walls would be one of the candidates, and that would be an interesting one, since it wouldn't be a designation of the entire park, we'd have to identify through mapping, you know, what is a protected feature and what isn't, so that the Parks Department and everyone else knows, you know, what's listed on the register. And then two of our recent projects with the Parks Department, both of which won awards from the American Planning Association for kind of preservation planning, are the reuse of the Craftsman Bungalow for the Glendale Heritage Garden, and also the cool Streamline Modern gas station for the Adams Square Mini Park. So we figured if we're getting accolades for that work and they're really interesting historic buildings themselves, we thought they should be on the Glendale Register. So this was all commission-generated, so that's one of the exciting things, and if there's anything not on the list that you're still concerned about or interested in, let me know if you have any specific things, and that will help guide our, you know, as we approach some of the people responsible for the sites.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I ask a comment?
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity to reach out to some of the universities for student projects in the area of historic preservation that may want to take up some of these application, you know, creation?
We have a great connection to USC Historic Preservation Program. And then knowing, knowing where the students' minds are right now, it's finals week, I'd say no.
Wouldn't at that moment.
But as an opportunity, you know, over the summer or at some point, we could definitely offer it as a volunteer opportunity.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's a great opportunity to partner either with university students or people in the community who may be interested, pairing up with the Glendale Historical Society to do a little, you know, promoting. But yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for anybody who wanted to get into the archives but never has to.
Yes. And Glendale College also might be a great resource, so...
Yeah, I, um...
Good idea.
This project is really like a personal passion of mine, I just love the idea that we're doing this, and as a commissioner, since we have already made policy on ex parte communications, I'll do whatever I can, and I hope my colleagues would join me in a non-Brown Act violation approach to making sure the community is aware of this initiative, and would also like to see some kind of rough outlook, you know, timeline on the steps that have to be taken to do this and what's involved, because it sounds wonderful, and when you look at the list, it's very exciting, but the devil is in the details, and so I think this is something that we should regularly keep track of so that it stays on track, and we're doing whatever we can do to help move it along.
Definitely.
Thank you very much for these reports and for everything the staff is doing to support our commission.
We have one more for 8C, and this is the, and I apologize for the format of this, I didn't have a chance to kind of make this a more legible document, but we just want to keep you updated regularly on Milzack conditions that you impose on owners who enter into Milzack contracts, and make sure that we're actually staying on track and that they're fulfilling their work. And I'm glad to say that every condition that you have asked for has either been met this year or is going to be met close to the end of the year. So the only one that I don't believe will be done by the end of the year is one that was actually, was due at the end of last year, but because of illness, we gave, granted an extension to the homeowner, and they're now proceeding with changing the garage doors at 1117 Rossmoyn. Two of the three conditions at 1220 Cortez have been met, and one, and this is where staff, I believe, should, has some flexibility, where the owners are looking at a bigger project that would involve an area where there is a condition to restore an exterior cabinet in the poolhouse, so it makes sense to do that work at the time that the whole project is going to move forward, so that we've given an extension. The garage at 1339 Romulus had a permit pulled. It was originally a carport that was illegally converted to a garage. When the commission considered it, it was an enclosed garage, and you voted to put it on the register with that, with that in place, but asked the owner to get the permit. 1640 Art Even is replacing a number of aluminum windows with new wood windows. The permits have been pulled. I haven't gotten final confirmation that they've been installed, but they were moving at a schedule that I think that will be done probably in the next few weeks. And then all of the work at 1770 Grand View, that both the commission and, no, actually council didn't add any commission, or any conditions to that, that was all done almost immediately after the hearing, so that was taken care of very proactively. And then the other one, I think I didn't highlight, yeah, at the bottom, 2440 St. Andrews, our most recent designation, there were three columns in that kind of circular pergola. They went and just did it, and it looks fantastic. It's like, you know, they, they had found all the salvaged bricks, they had been pushed down the hillside, so they just pulled all the brick up, built them, and it looks like it never got pushed down the hill, so...
Thank you, Simones.
Yes, right, yes.
That is done way ahead of schedule. So we'll be keeping this, I'll reformat this so it's a little easier to deal with, but...
That's very useful to have that and review that information, and...
Yeah, we'll do that annually to make sure people are on track.
Fantastic.
That's it.
Okay. Does anybody have any final comments or questions before we adjourn? And, okay, then I'd like to propose we adjourn the meeting in memory of a great Glendale modernist architect, Robert Berman. Thank you.
Thank you.